For this town hall meeting on cyber wellness, uh this year our topic is uh largely on cyber bullying, right? I'm sorry, let me just, okay, sorry, let me just move on. Okay. So a very quick recap of what we have done for town hall, right? This is actually the third town hall on cyber wellness. So the first town hall meeting uh took place in twenty twenty one. So uh we we talk about the use of uh learning devices. And we actually um share some tips with the parents as to how we can actually help to manage the use of uh learning devices at home. So um just a very quick recap, so we talk about ownership of learning devices. Um we would like parents to actually communicate this very clearly with the children that the device belongs to you, parents. Therefore, parents, you have full rights to the device, right? So uh some children have this understanding that uh it is their device. So when parents want to make use of it or want to set certain control on it. Um yeah, the reaction from children is a little um yeah, unexpected, right? So of course, uh we talk about setting ground rules for the usage of devices, uh such as at what time can the children be using it? Uh try not to use it during meal times. And we also encourage parents to actually create technology-free zones at home. For example, devices should not be used in the toilet, not be used in the uh bedroom. So preferably at the common areas where parents actually can see what the children are um yeah, looking at. Then we talked about uh activating parental controls on learning devices. So in our school, of course, uh we have the mozaal and P three, P four parents who are in the one-to-one computing device program. Uh you are enrolled in this uh program. So that both yourself and the school, we actually call control, we both have got control over the child's learning device. Um for us, the school will actually control from seven A M to four P M daily. And the full control will be given back to the parents after four P M. And during the school holidays, uh parents have full controls uh twenty-four seven, right? Then we talked about uh how else can we actually avoid our children uh being addicted to the use of devices? Um so we told parents that maybe we can organize more indoor and outdoor activities together. And we actually make a list of uh activities that we can do together with our children. Of course, this is non exhaustive. Then, very importantly, as adults, uh we also encourage parents uh and teachers to model good digital habits. Um like uh try to read a proper book uh instead, uh if possible. And not read uh online book, but of course, we know that there are certain devices like Kindles and all that children enjoy reading with. So um it's fine, but do strike the balance, yeah, strike a balance with actual book and you know, online book. And of course, uh adults like us, uh we need to be very mindful of the use of like our mobile phones. Uh it's kind of uh yeah, inevitable for us to be using our mobile phone, right? Uh any time of the day, but uh be very mindful of how we are using it. So that we will be consistent with the message that we send to our children. Um for example, uh not to walk when they are using the device. Because many children will be looking at their device and they're walking, right? So it is actually dangerous to do so. Therefore, uh adults like us, we have to model the talk. So make sure we um model the right behavior when using devices. Then we talk about navigating the internet together. So that we know uh what are some of the things that our children are doing with their devices. And it also make it easier for the children to communicate some of the experiences that they have uh on the internet with us. Yeah, and we can actually render help whenever necessary. So those are things that we talk about. And of course, um we also teach the children some etiquette and all, right? So if we look at what the children are doing, then if we pick up anything that's undesirable, we can actually address it um yeah, quickly. So then, uh what about town hall two? In twenty twenty-two, our town hall meeting, uh we actually touch on gaming. So we know that game uh this gaming disorder or sometimes you call gaming dependency is something that parents are very concerned with. So our second town hall, we talk about gaming. So these are some of the things that we we touch on, right, last year. And we shared with parents what is uh at most schools then. So we said very clearly that if if the children are already gaming, uh we will encourage them to stop gaming if possible. However, if they cannot stop gaming, then we would like them to at least reduce the amount of time on gaming. And for those who are not gaming, then the school will encourage them not to start gaming online. Yep, that's the school stand that we actually share with parents. And uh we recognize that there are good things, there are things that the children can pick up from gaming. So for example, this very um popular game Minecraft, I think uh uh have this uh skills that the children may acquire, like for example, cre- creativity, planning, curiosity. And uh for those of you who are aware of how the the game is played, we know that the children actually need this special vis- uh visual kind of visualization skills. Yeah, so we do recognize that, well, some games do have um yeah, uh benefits. So these are some of the things that we actually address. We we need to acknowledge, yes, that there are things that that are good from gaming. Um however, we also must agree that too much of a good thing is a bad thing lah, right? So uh children being children, they have no control over the amount of time that they they gain. Then uh other things uh yeah, will come into the picture. Like for example, some possible problems from gaming. So these are some of the common ones that parents are very, very concerned with. And of course, the game dependency and the gaming disorder. So these are the things, uh what is dependency disorder? When you depend on it, you still, you will be able to exercise a little bit of control over yourself. Uh however, when you become a disorder, right, then uh there is really no control at all already. Yeah, so that was some of the things that we shared in our uh town hall on gaming. Then, of course, uh we also caution ourselves that excessive gaming, right? Sometime, um and most very often, it is a symptoms of deeper unmet needs. Yeah, so why exactly, is it just all for pleasure, just just to clear the levels and and you know, go and get a high score? But what exactly draw them to gaming? So are there really um are there, uh is it just plainly pleasure or are there deeper unmet needs? So to study that, right, then we talk about the four different types of gamers. Because uh like, for example, um we know that there are some children who are very uh they are introvert. They they do not talk to people and all, but in the game world, right? Um because they're sitting behind the screen, so you notice that, hey, they become a little bit more yeah, open up to people and then they start talking to people, so they actually try to socialize uh in the gaming world. So we realize that, yeah, there will be this particular group of children there. So then, of course, after um talking about the different uh type of players, right? Then we actually um shared some engagements, uh strategies, some suggestions for parents to engage the different type of gamers. So this is what we have shared last year. Then, of course, some tips for mindful gaming. Um of course, we encourage them to do things um that's offline, uh good to develop other hobbies such as the doing a sport. Uh making time for family activities, limiting time for gaming. Uh some parents ask, uh what is a good time? What is, is it one hour, is it two hours? Uh what is a good time? Really, it depends. Yeah, it really depends, all right? So we can't give you a a magic number here. But what is important is to structure their time and set routines. Like, for example, they must actually uh finish their homework, finish their revision before they start gaming. Yeah, so that that's something that um parents need to know. That's why we are talking about setting structures here, setting good habits. And of course, very importantly, uh taking breaks between levels. So that will give the eyes some time for eye rest and that would actually help um to avoid problem with straining the eyes. Yep. Then, of course, uh walk through some underlying issues with the children. So ask them, um you know, what, why, why are you, you know, what, why do you, what do you like about this game? Why are you doing this so much? Is there something that, you know, you can share with me and things like that? Good to talk to our children, um yeah, on the games that they are actually um playing. So that is roughly uh some re- we revisit some of the things that we talked about in our previous town hall session. So what about this year? So this year, uh we hope to just touch a little bit on cyber bullying. Yeah, so uh what exactly is cyber bullying? Uh for measures to be effective, right, we probably need to take note of some unique features of cyber bu- bullying. Then what would be the guiding principles that the school actually take uh for us? In terms of handling uh cyber bullying issues, then what are some of the positive and proactive approach that we can actually take? And of course, um for this approach wise, uh what can adults like us, you and me, or the two teachers can do? So maybe we just visit a little bit about the digital landscape, all right? So uh this is uh in twenty twenty-two. You'll notice that the social media penetration in Singapore on average is about eighty-nine point five percent. Global is fifty-eight point four. Singapore is very much higher. And in terms of the average number of social media accounts used actively, yeah? Singapore, we are on par with the global average, which is seven point five. And um in fact, if you take a look at the fixed internet connection speed, uh while we are ranked first, we are really fast. And of course, the daily hour online, uh we are slightly higher, probably about half an hour higher than the global average. So if this is what is happening out there, then what does it mean to us? So, of course, there will be pervasive use of um technology, right? So without the we, all of us. And of course, with the uh introduction of this um learning device in secondary school, I'm not sure if parents are aware that all secondary school children, we are all supposed to have a learning device. Uh once we enter second one, we will have one. So and we actually have home-based learning. So uh the use of technology is unavoidable. It is here to stay with us. Therefore, then how do we manage it? And of course, with the pervasive use of learning devices, the it will bring us, uh it will, it will bring it will actually then bring along with us some some uh uh challenges, yeah? And one of them would be uh cyber bullying. Uh with the emerging trend, right, we rely, uh we realize that cyber bullying is an emerging trend. Um but of course, not to be alarmed that um it is like out of hand and things like that. It's just that we do not want it to uh to go our hand. We do not want it to be escalated. So uh we are looking into this this topic and then just, you know, to to discuss a little bit of what we can do with parents. So this survey uh is on uh is is done with eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-three, uh right, respondents. And this uh respondents, they are aged between eight and nineteen years of age. So our children fall within the category of eight to twelve and then thirteen onwards, that's the teenagers. So out of this group of uh children, right? About forty to fifty-five percent of them actually um communicated that they have actually ex- uh experienced cyber bullying. So let's take a look at the breakdown. Uh it's not very clear, not to be worried. The light blue actually show our children between eight to twelve years of age. And the dark blue actually is the secondary school children, the teenagers. So you'll notice that as compared to other cyber uh risk, cyber bullying is one of the, you know, uh higher, hi- higher ones, I would say, right? So let's take a look. So what exactly is cyber bullying? So of course, by definition, it's very easy for us to know lah. Cyber bullying basically occurs online. Uh with the use of technology, it can, you know, it can be mobile phones, it can be computers or any social media network. Uh and it is used as a mean to hurt or upset someone on purpose. So basically, whatever the bully will do in a physical world, right? If they bring it into the uh virtual world, then it becomes cyber bullying, right? So what are the different forms of cyber bullying? Um this would be the common ones, yeah. Then, um of course, in primary school, uh we have probably uh you know, the relational bullying, like exclusion, maybe um children are removed from a particular group uh that is common. Then uh probably um joking about their friends, uh gossiping, you know, saying certain things. So that is common at primary school level. And of course, uh sharing of the personal information, yeah, of the victims is something that we do see. But not so about the others, right, the other form of bullying. Right, so um like what I mentioned earlier on, right? In order for us to um ha- put in measures, right? There will be some unique features of cyber bullying that we need to take note of. Uh they are mainly four. So one of them is actually the avoidance of technology. Now, cyber bullying incidents, right, they can go viral very, very quickly, making it very difficult to manage and control. Now, as adults, we will know, right, um yeah, when something goes online, uh sometimes it's really difficult to 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 remove them online. And and yeah, people will start reposting and all. So um it's something that's challenging to to control, so that's something that we need to recognize, all right? Then, of course, the perception of anonymity. So here, we talk about uh in the perspective of the cyber victims. So uh the cyber victims, right, um they they fall prey to cyber bullying because uh that they they have a tendency to overshare, yeah, personal information online. And they are not aware, our children being young, right? They are not aware of who actually can see what they have posted. So they will just post thinking that, oh, only my friend can see it. But unfortunately, once it goes online, anyone can see it. So our children need to have this understanding. And of course, uh when it comes from the view of the cyber bully, right? Uh these people behind the screen, right, they tend to be bolder compared to, you know, physical bully. They actually, people can see them, right? So this cyber bully, they tend to be bolder, thinking that, hey, I'm sitting behind my computer screen, my device. Uh what I do, no one knows, right? Uh they don't know who am I and what I have done. So uh that's the perception that they actually have when it comes to um yeah, an- anonymity. So then what about the next one, complex role of bystanders? So uh bystanders, um like us in school, right? Sometimes uh the classmates are aware of the bully identity, even the victims. They are aware of who is this person that is bullying them online. And um they choose to be quiet, they choose not to um report. And uh so here, we need to actually educate the children uh and let them know that they can actually be an upstander, providing support to the cyber bu- uh victims. So here, so the prevalence of cyber bullying. Um cyber bullying is worsened by the culture of silence and inaction. So that is related to what we have mentioned just now. So we really need to uh work with the bystander, uh teach them that what they can actually do. Um so you, from here, you can see that three-quarters of the children and teenagers in Singapore said that they had been bullied once. So that that is like the uh forty to fifty-two percent of the children, I mentioned that they they have been cyber bullied before. And almost all of them did not inform their parents. Yeah, they choose to stay in silence. So uh this is um not good. Therefore, we need to take note of it and see as adults, what can we do, what uh how can we step in to help our children? So one of the, and then the last unique features that we need to take note is the formation of this uh victim bully cycle. Um cyber victims, right, they can actually easily retaliate, right, against the bully online. Because they also have this, this idea of that I'm behind the screen, nobody knows that I'm also doing it back to other people, you know? So then it becomes a cycle, I'm a victim, then when I retaliate, then I become now, now I become the bully. So the bully become the victim. So it keeps on going on and on, which will further worsen the situations. So uh where we are coming from is that what are the measures that we want to put in place to avoid, to prevent this cycle? Yeah, from taking place. So these are some of the unique features of cyber bullying. So here we are bringing to you um the school stand. So uh we will have this zero tolerance. We will communicate, yeah, we will communicate this very clearly with our children. And here we are communicating with our parents. And we really hope that you will um reinforce this idea in your children for us. That uh we are really taking a zero tolerance stance. And uh every reported case is important to us and we will take it very, very seriously, yeah. Uh we do have a case management team, we have our um discipline team uh with a group of teachers looking into handling cyber bully, all right, uh cases. So that is what we will do and we shall do a little bit more later on, as in what are some of the things that school have put in place uh to prevent cyber bullying from taking place, right? So this is the guiding principle that we actually have. So um every child has a right to feel safe, right, to learn. So here, we want to promote a safe and supportive environment and also a culture of care. So uh there are things that the school will put in place, like example, uh at the latest likes, I will also talk a little bit like uh we do have our device, the use of device policy, uh which is actually printed in our handbook, page nineteen to twenty-one. And we also have some uh write-up in our handbook on page twenty-three on the yeah, the uh the use of uh other unauthorized devices. So we communicate it very clearly with our children, uh what they can and should do, right? And in the event that if they, you know, violate any of the things that is stated, then what are some of the possible consequences? Yeah, we will actually put it very clearly there. Then, of course, uh prevention, uh challenging behaviors from, we want to prevent challenging behaviors from occurring. So uh if we 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 pick up any telltale sign of certain things that may escalate into bullying, then we will step in um as soon as possible, yeah, quickly. Then, of course, uh we will address the inappropriate behavior promptly. Um like what I mentioned, every reported case will be taken very, taken up very seriously and very quickly, right? Uh although, uh if you have the the chance to look at some of the uh articles, some writing about bullying, right? They will say that, oh, it has to be repeated and it has to be persistently, yeah, happening uh to warrant to be a bully case. But here, we are not waiting for it to be repeated and we do not need it to be persisting, you know, to be persistent. So long as it happened, even if it is the first time, we'll take it very seriously, yeah. Then, of course, uh we will correct it before it affects the development of the child and the well-being of the child. And very importantly, uh we talk about the restoration, if you look at the two R's, right, in blue at the bottom. Uh what we are very, very um however, I wouldn't say interested, what we would really, really work on is the restoration of relationship with others. Because uh we 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 want the children to know that, well, you know, is is you can still be friends, even though these may have happened. And how do you be friends again? So that's where we will come into the picture and and educate the child, yeah. So this is basically the guiding principle for us. We want to promote safe environment. We want to prevent challenging behavior from occurring. We address inappropriate behavior if we see any uh very quickly. We correct it, all right, before it affects the children's development and well-being. We replace the inappropriate behavior with the appropriate ones. And of course, we would like them to restore their relationship with others, right? So this would be the guiding principles that the school will will um yeah, make use of. So as mentioned, uh promote and prevent, what are some of the things? So school have put in place rules, we have put in place policies governing the use of mobile devices, not just mobile devices. Uh mainly learning devices, right? Because in our school, many children are using uh iPad, so that would be a learning device. And um we included the disciplinary consequence, like if you uh use a device at an inappropriate time or place, then the device will be taken away, temporary um confiscation. Yeah, it is actually stated in our handbook, right, so for any non-compliance. So uh we set expectations for healthy and responsible use of I C T in the school and at home. So uh we have I C T less, uh sorry, we have cyber wellness lesson during F T G P lessons. Uh we share videos in the morning before we sing the national anthem and take the pledge. So sometimes we do reinforce some of these cyber wellness messages, right? And then, of course, um we establish and communicate to the students, uh when it's safe. What are some of the safe and accessible channels uh of help that's available to them? Well, whether they are affected, to those affected, or those who would like to share with us that someone is being affected. Uh they can talk to any adult, uh not just their form teachers, their subject teachers, any adult uh that they trust, that they are comfortable to talk to. We actually uh told the children that, yeah, just let us know and we will actually render help. Then, of course, uh we also work with teachers to harness safe and secure digital technologies. So you know that uh we will um, yeah, we will discourage the teachers from having Facebook because knowing that our children are not thirteen years of age, they should not be having a Facebook account at this moment, right? So uh we need to be very mindful, what are some of the platforms that we can use, right, for our teaching and learning? So we will make sure that we try our very best to harness a safe and secure uh platform, digital technologies, to build connectedness with your your children. Then, of course, we encourage all staff, student, parents to report any misbehavior or threats that you discover online or you think that it might be happening soon. Just just alert us, then we will, yeah, be a little bit more vigilant, okay? And as mentioned, we will investigate any reported case promptly, yeah. We will take every case seriously. So maybe um just a little bit more on um how can we help, how can we adults help? Um this is actually shared by touch that organization that actually talk uh that deal with a lot of cyber wellness matters. So one of the thing is support. So what do we mean by support? How do adults support our children in terms of cyber bullying? Uh firstly, offer practical help. So we need to be very explicit what exactly the children can do and should be doing. Uh perspectives, uh perspective, the vic- the perspective of the victims, the per- perspective of the bully, so on and so forth. And very importantly, listening ears. We need to listen to our children. So here, so um be mindful that uh talk to them uh when they are not emotionally high, so not to talk to them when they are emotionally high, they are so affected. So you'll find that it's so difficult to talk to them when they are emotionally high, so they are so affected. They are not able to, you know, get things right, are not able to give you all the necessary information that you will need. Or sometimes, because they are emotionally high, um they may give you information that that actually confuse the whole, the whole matter, yeah. So uh tell them, cool down. So in our school, we have mindfulness, right? I ask them to practice mindfulness, close your eyes, breathe in, breathe out, cool down, calm down uh before you, you know, talk to daddy, mommy or anybody uh about what you have experienced. Then, um also, as adults, we need to manage our expectations. Um we will not be able to solve it immediately, you know, get everything settled at one goal. We need to um reconcile with it. So then, if we are not able to get rid of everything, then what is at least the one or two things that we would like to address or find out? Yeah, so uh do things gradually, progressively, right? And then decide on one action uh to encourage the the our children to take. And it is good, uh support would also mean that commit to at least one check-in, maybe weekly or fortnightly. Uh spend some time, sit down, talk about, um you know, uh how our children are using the devices. So uh what did you do with your device for the past one week? Um is there any experience um that you want to share with me, be be it the good ones or the not-so-good ones? So uh commit, all right, uh have conversation with the children, that's a form of support. And of course, uh moving forward, um keep the conversation channel open. Yeah, so that would be something that we need. And of course, support would mean uh offering them practical advice. Some of our children, uh being children, right, they're so young, they are clueless what they can do. So some of the things like technical solutions for social media is like teaching them how to um block. Yeah, block the someone that is um not very nice online. Yeah, then teaching them, uh talk to your daddy, talk to your mommy, uh what is happening? Let us know. If you are not sure what to do, what you can do, let us know, then we will, we will step in and do it for you. Yeah, so uh also, uh take note that sometimes after they have spoken, right? We have alerted the teachers, we have, you know, looked into the matters. Um the recovery process may span weeks to months. So continue to listen to your child, do the check-in to make sure that, you know, things are okay. Um they are feeling better. So this would be some of the things that as adults, we need to be mindful of, right? That's uh in terms of support. Then what's next? Educate. Supporting is our listening ears, um telling them that, hey, there are some things that you can do. So we need to educate, remember earlier on, uh the slides talk about uh educating the victims, educating the bullies. Um we also need to educate the bystanders, right? So educate the victims, like what I mentioned, we support them, we tell them what you can do. But we also need to teach, telling them is one thing, but probably, uh you know, showing them, you know, bringing them, okay, come sit down. This is what you can do and this is where you can go to, it's important. So uh educating our victims, um teach them that uh they need to save the evidence, right? So how to save the evidence, like how to, sometimes they say, oh, so-and-so bully me. Then when mommy says, oh, who is it? What the, what did the person do? So um, okay, they can't, they 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 are not able to explain to you very clearly what exactly happened. So saving the evidence would then be very helpful for us adults. Um it can be a screenshot of the conversation. Uh it can be a screenshot, you know, sometimes uh when we talk about gaming, remember the second cyber uh wellness, we talk about gaming? Some of our children are playing online games. And these online games are open to to any age group. So when our children are in these games, um they are with uh the more grown-up kids. So when our children are in these games, um they are with uh the more grown-up kids. So when they are not doing as well as the the children, right, in the games, then you realize the better gamer tend to be a bit hush in the choice of words. And then you, please leave the game, don't play anymore, yeah, you know, you you you, you know, you slow down everybody and all. So children feel that, oh, you are being so harsh with me, and then they 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 get upset. So then they feel that they are being bullied in that sense. Yeah, so it could happen in the online games that your children are playing, so be mindful. And if uh if possible, if the children are playing the game, good to sit with your kid, you know, once in a while, if possible, to monitor the 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 mood, you know, how's the the community interacting with one another, yeah, in the game itself. Then, of course, teach them, if anything uh happens, learn to stop, stop whatever that you are doing, uh block the person, right, block the person, then save the evidence, then tell the parents or trusted adults and report the case basically, and block off contacts, yeah. Then, of course, um it could be any trusted adults, because sometimes they are very shy to let the teacher know, they are very shy to let the parents know. Then we have counselor in schools, and then we have got, you know, uh other teachers that is uh in the, we call it the student well-being, right? They take care of the student well-being, so they can actually approach any of these trusted adults uh to talk about their 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 so-called unpleasant experience online, yeah. So what about the bullies and the bystander? So how do we, what do we do? Uh of course, here we will educate them, like awareness, they need to know that uh people are aware that things are happening. We know who you are, so there's no way that you are the anonymous person out there. Uh they need to be aware of the action. Sometimes this this children, right, they they do certain things, they say certain things, not aware that it is hurting others. So they they are not vicious, they don't have really very, very bad intent to, you know, to cause harm and hurt on others, but they are just not aware. And like bystander, they are not aware by keeping quiet, they are encouraging the bullies from, you know, continuing the wrong action. So we will educate them through F T G P lessons, our uh one-to-one interaction with the children uh for any informal interactions that we have with the children. So uh basically, teaching them, um yeah, the 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 actions, okay? So then, of course, identify, uh how can we identify that the children are being bullied or our children are bullying others? So be it both online and offline, like I would say, although we talk about cyber bullying here. So uh because if any form of bully that is offline, right, may, you know, may be transferred over to online. Therefore, we need to be mindful of that. So what are some of the sign that we can pick up to, you know, for us to be a little bit more, yeah, cautious and careful? So these are some of the things that we can look out for. Number one, withdrawn interaction with family and friends. If your child has been, you know, a very bubbly person, uh like to communicate and tell family, oh, mommy, do you know this is what happened in school? Uh this is what happened when I I go into the game and things like that. Suddenly, you realize that your child stopped talking about it or maybe talk less. Then please, um yeah, be a little bit more sensitive and then see if you can actually navigate uh the activities, the online activities with your child, to see if anything is actually happened, yeah, somewhere. Then, of course, uh unexplained changes in behavior. Uh if you feel that a child's sleep is being affected, then uh a bit uh easily uh agitated. Yeah, the tend to jump into the defensive mode suddenly. Sometimes when you just say certain thing, they 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 react too quickly. Yeah, then maybe it it's a change in their behaviors. Then um academic performance, so uh do monitor, I I'm sure parents monitor what the child been doing. So if your child, I mean, we don't have to wait till there's assessment to actually monitor the acad- uh the academic performance of the child. Because uh daily work, yeah, the performance is a telltale. So if you notice that, you know, the quality of homework is compromised, then maybe there is a reason for us to, yeah, be cautious of what is happening. So of course, for our primary school uh children, uh school attendance may not be uh something that we can pick up because our children will come to school, it's more of a secondary school, the teenagers, lah, because teenagers, um yeah, if they don't come to school, right, then and go somewhere else, probably, um we will not be able to pick that up so so uh, you know, readily. Then, of course, uh if you feel that the child is single out, ostracized, so they have actually this group of playmate, and then suddenly this group of playmate always exclude your child, then, yeah, then maybe that would be something that we would like to look into. So this would be some of the sign that we can uh look at to actually see if our children are doing well, both online and offline. Then, of course, um the last one would be know the law lah. I mean, of course, law here, not not really the kind of law that you want to go to court and all, but uh there would be some cyber law that protects the victims and their rights. And of course, when we talk about know the law, basically is like, what are the avenues? Where are the places that you can actually report? Let's say you are really experiencing cyber bully, is there like Touch is one, one that we can actually report cases of cyber bullying, because sometimes they just want to talk to a stranger, they feel better talking to a stranger. So uh Touch is an organization whereby children can approach. Then um we do have counselors, our counselors, they have got single friends, they have got some numbers that we offer the children. They can actually, um yeah, uh talk to people, they can call these people up. And of course, the last resort, um we do have what we call the pro- uh the protection order, but that would be very, very serious, yeah. So um that would really be the last resort after you have spoken with a trusted adult, after you have blocked the person, uh after you have stopped all contacts, right? And you are still experiencing harassment online, then we may proceed with the protection order. But that would mean that adults like us will have to step in, because children won't know exactly what to do. Yeah, so that would be something, so that would be the last uh bit that I would share with you. And I think that is my last slide, and, oh, okay, before that, so this is the blocking, so knowing the law, we can actually block, okay? So um uh make sure, and please tell your children not to overshare information, right? So if you block them, let the child know that, uh if you block this person, the person will not be notified when you block them. So don't worry, because sometimes they are afraid, they are afraid that if I block them, uh worst things, uh um more bad things can happen to them. So uh that stop them from blocking the 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 bully. So tell them not to worry, it's it's fine, no, the the person will not be notified. Then, of course, reporting, as mentioned. So uh there would be user rights, community, community guidelines for social media platforms. So whether they are using the the YouTube Kids channel or whether they are on certain social media platforms, they do have guidelines, yeah, so report. Once they feel uncomfortable and investigation will take place. And um sometimes uh this user will be removed from the the social media platforms. All right, so thank you so much. So uh I must thank Touch, uh as mentioned, Touch for allowing me to use some of the slides. You'll notice that some slides have got this uh logo for Touch. Um yeah, so they actually allow us to use some of these slides to share with you this afternoon. And we really thank you for joining us this afternoon for cyber wellness as well, right? So may I just, should I just stop this? So if, and I see if you have any. All right, so, okay, maybe I should. Yeah, and let me just close this, let me stop sharing. Right, so that's the little that we can share with you in the one-hour session. So I'm wondering if any one of you have got questions, uh if you have, please type in the Q and, oh, there is, huh, so let me just see, yeah, Q and A, what are some of the questions? Uh how to control? So let's open the tool here, so should I answer live, let me see, yeah? Uh set rules to play two to three hours for them is not working. Increase the outdoor activity also not solve the problem, they will still play without permission after that. Using spin guide to lock all the safari, it was also not good solution, they can still watch through Google. Oh, okay, um right. So for the first question about how to control uh efficiently? Hmm, okay, maybe this is not school standard, I'm not so sure if it is right, uh maybe the rest can jump. Well, if you realize that all this does not, uh why would you consider taking the device away from your child? So you know, the worst form of, I I don't know, some of the parents and and adults were sharing with me that uh one of the worst form of punishment could be the, you know, they are being deprived, they are deprived of the device. So without the device, I don't have to block, I I don't have to control, I don't have to restrict, I don't have to set the number of hours, because then you need to sit down with your child and communicate. I think communication is is the key here. Uh sit down because uh you are not able to exercise self-control, so I need to step in. The device belongs to me as adult, so I will have to take it away. And it will be make available uh for you to do maybe schoolwork and all. Then you will not be able to play any games. And I I'm not so sure whether is it too harsh on the child on this, but um that, I I've got three kids at home, so uh I I control the device. Um I tell them what you can do, so show me, show me that you are responsible enough to use it, otherwise it will be taken away altogether. Yeah, because in my first cyber wellness sharing, uh parents also communicated to uh with us that uh the children manipulated the parents, they are very smart. Because uh during the COVID time and the lockdown, right, parents are working online, so they are, you know, busy working. So the children will start pestering that, oh, can I use the device? And it was that, so you know, in order for you to work, then you say, okay, okay, go, 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 just use it. So once we do it, right, then we lost the battle, hmm, because the children know when to pester us. And yeah, so I guess um if everything that you have listed just now is not working, then taking the device away altogether, yeah. But uh not as in not to allow the child to use it at all, because um learning with a device is to stay. You know, if you look at the educational landscape, uh the use of device is to stay. But um how do we manage? Uh it's it's what we are all looking at lah, that we are learning, all of us, yeah. So I I hope it answered the question, um take it away, um yeah, then no access. I'm not so sure whether it's is it right, or maybe um maybe the the kind of activities that we increase outdoor activity doesn't solve the problem, uh need not be outdoor, indoor, uh doing things at indoor, maybe it is still not engaging enough, I'm not so sure, yeah. So um yeah, I hope, hope that, and this answer your questions. Okay, can teacher indicate estimated duration when assigning online, uh assigning online homework so that parents can gauge how much time our children should be on the device? Okay, so this one hmm a bit tricky. Hmm if we can, if we can, uh we will try, we will try to uh estimate. But because you know that the learning progress for children, um they are all different, the same piece of work for uh for different children, it's different, it's it's like the same piece of work for for student A, maybe the child takes fifteen minutes, but student B may take half an hour, because the student B is just so meticulous, you know, reading multiple times before, and then making sure that, you know, everything is written down neatly, clearly. Some children, they, you know, they will just do as they are reading, so really to have um a a a act, the the actual amount of time, it's it's really tricky for the teacher, I would say. But we we try, we try to let the parents know, and we do have homework guidelines because we we have homework guidelines as in uh how many hours of work we can give the child. So um uh look at those outlines, because sometimes the work that is assigned by the teacher is a a piece of reading. So yeah, so it will not take the child very long to read the articles or maybe that passage. Uh there could be some things, uh maybe a lesson, if it is a full lesson of maybe watching a video, after a video, do a quiz, after a quiz. And you know, sometimes people watch the video once and they are able to complete the quiz, but there may be others that have to watch the uh video more than once. Therefore, the amount of time, um we can't tell you exactly how much time, but we can, we try, yeah. So uh as parents also, you know the learning abilities of your child, so um patterns, so you must look out for patterns. If my child is online using the device for like two hours sitting there, then as parents, you also want to take a look and see, um well, two hours, what is your kids doing? If every time you walk past your child, they are at that very same screen, then you know something is not right. So it's not so much about the timing as well, it's really um where your kids is, what they are doing that's actually important. So if you walk past, it's always that that video, huh? And if let's say it's the same video, then you know that your child is doing the same piece of work probably, so maybe watch one or two more times, never mind. But if the video is like different video, teachers will not be sending too many videos at one go. So uh then that could be something that we need to pick up, yeah, and then, you know, to really just stay a little longer and see if there's really, is there a necessity of the child to continue with the online work? Yeah, so um that's, and we don't, um online work, uh teachers, we are very careful with the amount of online work that we give. So we will make sure we balance both online and offline work. And of course, during the COVID period, you know, when the pandemic, there was a lot of closed down, right? Then uh that would be when you expect more online work. But now with the full opening and all, uh there will be a balance, yeah, there should be a balance, so just just uh take note of that. Hmm, any other thing, any other concern? So I only see these two questions here. So if there is no other question, we will end the session for this afternoon. Anyone to have anything to add on? Yes, so maybe my principal?
Hi, um Grafton Parents, please, can you hear me? It's good, okay, so Grafton Parents, thank you so much for joining us, uh I'm Mister Chen, the principal. Uh just wanted to address, I think, the two questions that we see on screen right now uh that uh Madame Chan had also earlier, also given some some her her take to that. I think uh so there is, there's very much the take that we do, we do adopt as a school, right? So the first one, with regard to uh concerns from a parent about your child who is already starting to show addictions towards the screen, screen time. If I were to say, let's not talk about iPad or devices, let's draw the same parallel to TV time. Okay, and I have two, I have two daughters myself, and they are young. The moment that I started to allow them to watch TV, then I know I'm going down a particular slippery slope. Uh but we also have to ask ourselves, is it possible that we don't allow them to watch at all? Or is there a case whereby we need to make sure we have some expectations set together with them? We sit down and we talk to them, actually, children, no matter how young they are, right? Uh if let's say they are three or four years old and above, you realize that when you sit with them and you ask them, okay, how much TV time do you think is correct or enough for you at this stage? Then they will say something, you negotiate with them, but then you come to a certain agreement with them. And the agreement is, let's say, for example, okay, two episodes, which works out to about forty minutes, and you can accept that. Then that is something you you hold that word to it. Uh and I think that's the way that we actually try and build that, empower our children to take a certain stand, and then they have to hold true to their word. And we are building in them the autonomy, we are building in them that discipline. Uh of course, if relatedly, your question is, if our my child has already become addicted to devices, then what do we do? We may have to take more drastic actions. Like we mentioned, I think in terms of counseling, in terms of getting in touch with the school, I think it's very important that you do get in touch with the school so that we can monitor on our end how your children are interacting with devices in school. We give you the feedback so that at home, we can also uh have the same expectations. Sometimes if it's just enough, we do do need to tell the children that you are becoming addicted to the screen. At home, do not be surprised if your parents are gonna take it away from you. And we expect them to listen to the parents, right, listen to your daddy, mommy. In school, you listen to the teachers because we want to make sure that you get over this addiction. Okay, and I think that is something that both on the school stand, as well as uh the home, we can reinforce these things. So we work together on this, especially when, you know, you have suspicion that your child is getting addicted to to some of the screens. Um but I guess like what uh Madame Chan was saying, actually, the whole idea about uh learning through technology, the meaningful learning through technology is is here to stay. In fact, it has been shown that when we use technology wisely in the classroom, it can enhance learning more so than our traditional methods in the past. At a primary school stage, uh Emery Primary School is a bit more advanced compared to other schools when it comes to the use of devices. And what we have also seen is that, as a result of that, our children are actually generally more responsible when it comes to the use of devices. I've also gone, even though I'm new to the school, I have gone into the classrooms to witness for myself how the teachers are very skillfully getting students to open up the devices to use it uh in for teaching and learning. And how when they are done with it, you know, the routines that are put in place for them to keep the devices. And I'm very, I must say, I'm very impressed with the way our children are dealing with that at this, at this young age. So so that you can imagine when they go on to secondary school in future, and in all secondary schools, they have already rolled out the personal device learning program. It won't become, you know, something that we have to deal with at a later stage when it's the first time they are handling a device and that they need to use it for teaching and learning. And that they need to use it for teaching and learning. So we teach them young, we get them to start these routines correct from a young age. When they go on to secondary school, we are not so worried that they may uh may suffer from device addiction, okay? But again, I think just wanted to emphasize, should you have suspicion that your child is being addicted to the devices? Please get in touch with the form teachers as soon as possible, so that we can work something out. Alright, then related, relatedly to that second question on uh homework is, yes, we do have our homework policy. I think in, on average, we're looking at about, say, half an hour per subject uh per day. And that works out to about anything between one to two hours maximum in a day, because we want to ensure that children have the rest as well. So if you see that your child is going beyond that amount of time and still doing and using the devices. Maybe we should just check in with them a little bit. If you also have suspicion, they did the homework that was assigned to the children seems too long. Uh don't, don't worry about getting in touch with our form teachers, with our teachers, so that we can also advise. In terms of the duration that the children should be spending on each piece of homework, okay? So let's, let's keep those uh feedback channels open, alright, thank you. Just wanna check, there's any last questions from parents? Okay, otherwise, I think we can call today's town hall to a close, just wanna thank all parents once again for joining us. And for parents that we have requested that you get in touch with our, either the form teachers or the year hits, uh because of the questions that you have. Please do get in touch with us, so that we can answer your queries as well, alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.